I'd like to call the Township North Huntington Board of Commissioners regular work session meeting for Thursday, September 11th at 7:00 PM 2025. Roll call manager Falk.
Commissioner Happle.
Here.
Commissioner Hatwood.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Zota.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner McHugh.
Here.
President Hagus.
Here.
Please take a moment of silence to remember of nine eleven, to reflect on the strength and resilience of our nation. On this day, we hold a deep meaning as we honor those brave individuals and first responders who sacrificed and stood together in the face of this tragedy we will never forget. Thank you. Could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book at the podium? Thank you. Our first resident is Nick. If you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nick. I'm a resident of North Huntington Township. So I'm just back up here again, September 11th, to, you know, essentially continue to put on the record the way I've been treated, the way my family situation has been handled. You know, it was this time last year that I received threats from Ron Zona in his capacity as the chief detective of the county that he would arrest me if I continued to call the Westmoreland District Attorney's Office and, you know, ask them for assistance as to the failures of the local police department. It was also on September 11th of last year that I had to send Harry Falk an email when he decided that he was not going to honor my right to know request and remind him of the loss on this date and the constitutional rights that are protected for every American, to which I will admit, Harry, once you got that email, you quickly sent over all that information I was asking for. And that's kind of where this started because that's the right to know request where you gave me the procedure and policy for the department that, you know, put me further on this path of uncovering, you know, just how criminal in nature that scene was ran. Because when you have an officer in charge of the scene, Grega Rendez, who's also in charge of doing the training for officers to handle these accidents there, and he doesn't call a crash investigator. And then again, I have the Pennsylvania State Police affidavit. Ron, you're familiar with these types of things. You're a lifelong police officer. I have the affidavit from Shulley, Joshua Shulley, I think it is, from PSP stating that Officer Dan Lor, who just happens to be in the room this evening, didn't reach out to them until eighteen days after the accident. You can't, I mean, and then the habeas corpus that we just had for my family's incident, the crash investigator, the third party that you guys used, he was getting grilled by the defense, right? Because the defense is not going to let his client go down. I assure you of that. And he asked this crash investigator, is it standard for you not to take measurements? Is it standard for you not to come to the scene? Wouldn't you know, his exact words were, whoa, whoa, I've been friends with Chief Rizzo for decades. He called me and asked me to do a specific set of things. I thought what I was doing was extra on top of the crash report they already have. He said on court record, to my knowledge, North Huntington Police Department has their own in-house crash guys. Those would be the crash guys that were never called to the scene. Instead of running an honest investigation to ensure that my small child and his mother got justice that day, the only concern was, was to get Nolan Mullen off the scene. Now, one may ask, how could they have done this so quickly? Well, enter stage right, off-duty officer, badge number seventy-seven, Aaron Nutter, who was out jogging that day. He was the first person to show up to that scene. He knew exactly who Nolan Mullen was because of statements that came from Officer Kukic that the whole department knows who Nolan is. They know about his erratic driving. And when they go to make a move against him for his reckless, lawless behavior, they're told to stand down. So as soon as Nutter rolls up, he already knows what the deal is, right? So the phone calls get made, which then would explain why our lieutenant of administration, who never works the weekends, he was on that scene, not just a weekend, Fourth of July weekend. Our administrators don't work on Fourth of July weekend, not in any sector. They're off. The grunts work the weekends. So, you know, now we got this unlawful arrest that we're coming into, but quickly, for my last minute, I want to share about my experience today getting fingerprinted. First and foremost, I had this body camera on. As you see, it blinks green when it's recording. It's a green light when it's on and not recording. There's no light when it's doing nothing. Now, I had this on and went to go into the back to get my fingerprints when I was told that I had to remove this because the sign says no audio recording, video or audio. This was off. I can take this wherever I want. This, this is no more an audio recording device than my phone. They didn't make me forfeit my phone to go back there and get fingerprinted, but they're so deathly afraid of this camera because this catches all the nonsense and it can't be disputed. Now ironically, you were in the lobby while this was happening to me, Zach. I said, oh, I'm glad you're here, Zach. Look at the sign, no audio or video recording. This is not audio or video recording, so I should be able to, and you did nothing. But you tell us you're the oversight. You tell us that these are your employees, but you're literally standing there real time watching this happen to me. You do nothing. But guess what, guys? I don't have any evidence outside of me telling you that that's what happened because they won't allow me to video record in a public lobby of a tax-funded building. This is a big problem, and it's not going to go away. I appreciate your time. Again, I'm forfeiting my First Amendment right now to continue speaking under threat of retaliation, just so we're clear, because I have a lot more to say.
All right. Is there any other residents that would like to speak tonight to get a chance to sign in? All right. Not seeing any responses since an input. All right. Work session discussion topics. Manager Falk.
Sure. Item number one, proclamation for life-saving actions that's being presented at next week's meeting. Are there any questions about the proclamation? Moving on to item number two, appointment to the Westmoreland County Tax Collection Committee. The last appointment was Mr. Curly. Of course, he's no longer here. He retired. So they have an upcoming meeting in October, and we do not have anybody appointed on there. So the recommendation is to point the manager as a delegate, the assistant manager as the first alternate, and then the commissioner as a second alternate. So there'll be a motion next week for those items. Are there any commissioners that are interested in serving? Or, and are you guys okay with the manager and assistant manager serve as delegates? Because that's how it's set up with the other municipalities, as you can see in your packet. Moving on to item number three, the ordinance establishing procedures for leasing of township-owned land. I presented to you as another draft after the comments of last month's meeting. Are there any questions on this draft? We believe we've captured everyone's comments. Does anybody like to see any more changes, or is this good to move on to next week for advertisement? All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to topic number four, the 2026 budget discussion. So as we develop the 2026 budget, it is essential to thoughtfully consider an additional revenue source, not only to sustain our current level of service to the community, but also to ensure that we are adequately maintaining and improving our infrastructure, particularly our roads and stormwater systems. In 2006, North Huntington Township raised property taxes from eight point two-three mils to ten point two-three mils. The last tax increase, that was the last tax increase that was enacted. Since then, the rate has been reduced to nine point two-three mils. At that time, our annual budget was nine million dollars. Today, it stands at sixteen point one million. This growth hasn't happened without reason. It reflects the rising cost of delivering essential services like police, road maintenance, stormwater management, and community programs. It also accounts for increases in employee wages and benefits, inflation, insurance, and the need to invest in aging infrastructure. As we look ahead, it's important to understand that maintaining the quality of life we all value in North Huntington requires thoughtful planning and sustainable funding. As the budget currently stands, North Huntington Township will require an additional five-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars in revenue to main existing operations and services. This projection does not include any surplus revenue from the prior fiscal year, nor does it account for any potential transfers from the reserve fund, which currently holds a balance of four point seven million dollars. We will need to rely on any prior year surplus and/or utilize any money from the reserve fund to balance the budget. Additionally, this budget does not incorporate any major capital projects outlined in Mr. Robinson's major projects memo, which could significantly impact future financial planning. Over the years, we have seen a steady increase in stormwater-related complaints from residents. In 2025, we prioritized improvements along the nine ninety-three corridor, focusing on Frog Road, Scotch Hill Road, and Pine Hollow Road. Most recently, we received the results of a study from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the persistent flooding issues on McKee Road. The proposed solution includes significant engineering and infrastructure upgrades with an estimated cost of nine-hundred-thousand dollars. Addressing these challenges is critical, not only for public safety, but for protecting property and ensuring long-term resilience in our infrastructure. Mr. Robinson's memo also addresses the unfunded MS4 mandates with stormwater detention ponds and stream bank stabilization projects at an estimated eight-hundred-thousand dollars. I propose to two options to the Board of Commissioners to consider to sustainable funding and improve the quality of our community. Option one, we are proposing a three-mil tax increase on real estate tax, raising it from nine point two-three mils to twelve point two-three mils, while also eliminating the per capita tax. The additional funding would provide the financial stability needed to repair, maintain, and invest in our community, not just for today, but for generations to come. It's a long-term commitment to the safety, functionality, and quality of life in our community. Option two is to support essential, to support essential services and infrastructure improvements. We are proposing a multi-part revenue strategy. Increase the real estate tax by one mil, raising it from nine point two-three to ten point two-three, eliminate the per capita tax, simplifying the tax structure for residents, and introduce a stormwater maintenance fee of seven dollars per month or eighty-four dollars per year per household. Businesses with impervious services would also be billed accordingly. The net impact of the general fund would be an increase of approximately three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Additionally, the stormwater maintenance fee is projected to generate one point eight million dollars annually, which would be dedicated to new, to a new stormwater management fund. This fund would allow us to shift stormwater-related expenses, such as materials and supplies, out of the general fund, freeing up resources for other priorities. More importantly, it would provide the financial foundation needed to tackle critical flooding and infrastructure projects that directly affect our community's safety and quality of life. To go into the proposed budget, or the draft budget, the slideshow, we have the township funds consisting of the general fund, light fund, water fund, the fire service fund, parks fund, liquid fuels fund, and capital reserve fund. We're into the PowerPoint presentation now, so if you, I provided, gave you guys a handout to follow along. So the general fund we'll talk about tonight affects the general government, public safety, community development, public works, and parks and recreation. So this is our main operating fund. So currently, in this first draft of the budget, you know, eighty percent of our taxes, or eighty percent of our budget is funded by tax revenue, which is made up of the real estate tax, the property tax, delinquents, the per capita tax, which is about eighty-five-thousand dollars for next year, real estate transfer tax, earned income tax, which has steadily increased throughout the years, business grocery receipts, occupant, occupation and local service tax, which generates, we estimate, at six point, eight point six million dollars next year, increase of, of two percent. So as you can see with this chart, you can see where all the taxes have remained steady through the years, but it's the, the earned income tax that has steadily increased throughout the years. That's in supportive, as you can see, throughout the years, we've built multiple houses, and we've had high-wage earners coming to North Huntington. So North Huntington is a destination to be for, for high-wage earners. Our other revenue generates twenty, twenty percent of our, supports twenty percent of our general fund, which is the license and permits, fines, interest, rent, grants, state shared revenue, charges for services, public safety, recreation programs, and miscellaneous, which is any carryover funds, our worker comp insurance premiums, and things of that nature, things that are unclassified, which we budget only five-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand next year because, again, we have not budgeted any carryover money, and we have not budgeted any money coming in to, from the general, from the reserve fund, which is our savings account. As you can see, this year, as I remember, if you recall last year, this year's budget, the 2025 budget, was non-sustainable, but we had a lot of projects to do, which was Pine Hollow, Frog Road, and Scotch Hill. So the 2026 general fund revenue summary, this year's revenue, or this year's revenue was seventeen point seven. Next year, our revenue is going to be fifteen point five, which is a twelve percent increase, which accounts for not moving any money over, no grants, and a carryover balance, which we estimate might be around four to five-hundred-thousand dollars at the end of the year, but we're not, we're not sure of that yet. It's just the best educated guess. But that does not account for that. So here's a nice pie chart that shows that, you know, forty-five percent, or forty-three percent of our revenue comes from earned income tax, and twenty-five percent of our revenue is property tax. North Huntington relies heavily on earned income tax and other revenue, which is less common in many municipalities that depend more on property taxes. North Huntington property tax share is twenty-five percent, which is significantly lower than the national and state averages of fifty percent. And this comes from the PA Municipal League study that was done a number of years ago. The general fund summary, as you can see, going back to 2015, we have the, the revenue and the expenses, which at 2015, we operated a deficit of fifty-eight thousand. We had a surplus the following year, and then we had several years of deficits, and then we had a couple of years of, of major surpluses. When I started, we had a surplus of one, one point nine million, and now we're back at the negatives. We're at ten thousand at a deficit in 2023. In 2024, we were a hundred and one thousand dollar deficit. This year is balanced. Next year, we're at a deficit of over five-hundred-thousand dollars. So in the grand scheme of things, our, our total amount, including our general fund and our general fund reserve, it's starting to go back down. We do have a policy where we want to maintain twenty-five percent of our income in our general fund reserve on our savings account. Next year, we're going to be down to the twenty-seven thousand dollars. If we use, or twenty-seven percent, we want to be at twenty-five percent to be fiscally responsible. But if we don't do anything, there's not going to be any projects. We're going to move five-hundred-thousand dollars from the general reserve into the general fund, and we'll be down to four point two million. Once we move that money over, and it's, it's spent, there's no, it's spent, we can't even afford at this point to put money in our savings account, to build that savings. So we're at a crossroads. And as you can see, we peaked in 2022 and 2023, and then we, we started going back down, the bell curve, I guess you want to call it. So in North Huntington, the average parcel, the median parcel is twenty-four, is assessed at twenty-four thousand dollars. So if you get your tax bill, and it's three thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars, only seven percent of that, or twenty-two, or two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, is the municipal taxes. Six hundred dollars goes to Westmoreland County, and twenty-three hundred dollars goes to the school district, which our mileage is at ninety-six point three. So as you can see, when you get your tax bill, everybody complains, your taxes are high, taxes are high. No, our taxes are not high. It's the school districts that are high. We only account for seven percent of your total tax bill. So without going in much further detail, the 2026 budget expenditure summary compared to last year, we've decreased our expenditures by nine percent. This is mainly, if you look at public works, it's decreased by twenty-three percent because we can't afford to do any projects. The money that's budgeted in there now for stone and storms, storm supplies are, are just to basically, that covers that one million dollars in the liquid fuels fund that we use for paving. When we do the stormwater and the catch basins, that and stone, that money comes out of the general fund. It does not come out of the liquid fuels fund. So we've, we've done as, as much as we can. I credit our, our team here. We always are looking at ways to save money and look in the ways of raising money, but, but we're at the crossroads now for the future of North Huntington to be financially stable. Mr. Robinson's projected project list, the 2026 road improvement list, of course, he always asks for exuberant amount every year, and he doesn't always get it, but he can explain why later. But, but next year is, is two point four million dollars. Historically, with the liquid fuels, we only have a million dollars. This year, we added four-hundred-thousand dollars in the general fund to help with the paving projects. So this year, we spent roughly one point four million dollars in paving. We can't give any more money in the general fund for paving right now. The Haywood Road culvert replacement project that's -- The Haywood Road culvert replacement project at seven hundred and fifty thousand, this is one of those cans that kept getting kicked down the road. I think I was told fifteen years ago, it was around two or three hundred thousand dollars. Now it's around seven hundred and fifty, and I bet you if we put it out, it'd probably be more than that, you know, just due to inflation. That one's not highlighted, but it should be highlighted because the stormwater detention ponds and stream bank stabilization that we have to do as part of MS4 is roughly eight hundred thousand dollars this year. The Roth Drive culvert replacement, as you recall, when we had that major storm come through in the summer, on the other side between the road and the park, that blew out, we put a replacement in that should last about fifty or sixty years, but the, the Army Corps of Engineers study that came out suggested that be a bigger size than it was last time. The McKee Road channel restorations, approximately two hundred thousand dollars, all those homes that back against a stream on McKee Road, they get flooded, and the Mahaffey Hill Road guide rail replacement at a hundred and eighty thousand. So the reason why I have those highlighted in yellow, and Haywood Road should be highlighted in yellow, because those are all projects that are eligible under a stormwater fee project. So if we implemented a stormwater fee, those projects are eligible to be done under, under So again, are currently, this is a summary of a current revenue of fifteen point five, our expenditures are sixteen million. We will need any surplus and/or reserve fund balance, fund to balance the budget. There'll be no projects, it would be hard to find money for projects. Option one, if we do a three-mill tax increase, we'll have the balanced budget, but we only have about five hundred and twenty-five thousand, we would only have about five hundred thousand budgeted towards projects. Option two, if we only raise it one mill and implement a stormwater fee, we'll have a balanced budget, and we'll be able to do over one point five million dollars in projects. So what does that mean for a homeowner? If we, if we raise the, raise the millage, implement a stormwater fee, and eliminate the per capita tax. As you can see on the top, if we go with a three-mill tax increase, which means we increase the millages the most, but yet we don't have, still don't have enough money to do the projects. For a home that's assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, those residents' tax bill is going to be increased by two hundred and ninety dollars versus if we do a one-mill tax increase and a stormwater fee for that same house, a property assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, they would only see a total increase of a hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that is, that is the best option for the resident, the property owner, and that's the best option for the township, as now we've generated the most amount of revenue to do the projects that are needed for North Huntington Township. The stormwater fee, since 2024, approximately eighty-seven municipalities in Pennsylvania had implemented a stormwater fee to fund infrastructure upgrades and comply with the environmental regulations, which is the MS, unfunded MS4 requirement. With the stormwater fee, we could potentially generate one point eight million dollars in additional revenue. Now, if this fee was introduced, there would be stormwater credits for businesses and homeowners. Those properties would be inspected by our engineering department to see if they would meet the needs for the, for their credit. And of course, this isn't going to happen overnight. If the board is interested in going this route, it's going to take a few months of drafting the ordinance, drafting the fees, and the language for that. And we probably wouldn't see any, any revenue stream coming in until probably late spring of next year for the stormwater fee, but, you know, the reason why we bring it up now because it's going to help if the board is interested in moving forward in this direction, it gives us, we can prepare the 2026 budget accordingly. And, and this fund would allow us to shift stormwater-related expenses, such as materials and supplies, out of the general fund, freeing up resources for other priorities, other projects. More importantly, it would provide the financial foundation needed to tackle critical flooding and infrastructure projects that directly affect our community's safety and quality of life. I'll turn it over to Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Harry. The slide you have up before you shows what we've done in the last ten years. The road improvement expenditures are contractual work that we've done. It's sort of milling and resurfacing, our synthetic fiber mat sealing program, and that, that program, the fiber mat, we apply on, on non-subdivision streets, more rural streets, to extend the useful life of those. It's, it's a great, great system. We've had great, great success. And also the crack, crack sealing program. Every, after we improve a road, three years after, we go in and crack seal all the cracks, and it's typically about fifty thousand lineal feet of cracks after three, three years. If you look at this, and you might say, boy, we've done a pretty good job, but to me, this tells a much, much different story. The road improvement expenditures are primarily from liquid fuels. Liquid fuels is a flat tax. You, you'll see gas pumps, how much, what you pay, pay at the pump, so much is, is gas, gas tax. So that's flat. Through, through the years, that tax remains flat, and just from normal inflation, three to five percent, our costs increase. And we've been depending too much on, on liquid fuels, and it is just, isn't working. Just a few years ago, milling and resurfacing, maybe three percent base repair, were about thirteen dollars a square yard. Now we're eighteen dollars a square yard. So just, Matt, do we, do we just do less? I, I don't think we need to do, I think most of you have heard in the past, I mentioned, five percent of our roads, we have a hundred and sixty miles of roads, five percent of road each year we should improve to have a minimum of twenty-year life cycle. A twenty-year life cycle in a road in western Pennsylvania is very, very difficult to achieve. It, it really is, whether it's in North Huntington, you know, Monroeville, Plum, it is very, very difficult. Due to underfunding of our budget and depending on liquid fuels over the last ten years, our average life, life cycle is twenty-four years. That's literally impossible, and I'll, I'll be showing you some slides, what the consequences of underfunding, drastically underfunding our road improvement program has, has done. It's really dug a big, big hole, but it's, it's time to start digging out of that hole, but it's going to take about six, six years. Six years if you approve my recommended budget for the 2026 road improvement program, and make it a goal of your 2026 budget, from now on, we're going to approve a budget that improves a minimum of five percent of our roads. So that would be eight, eight miles. If you go down the list, the, there was one year, 2018, that we, we did nine point seven two miles, but for the most part, the average in the last ten years is six point eight miles, and that is what has put us in this big hole that will, will take some time to dig out of. Go to the next one. These next, next four slides are, they're a little, little different, but for most part, they're, they're the same. They tell us the same story. You, you want to keep your, your roads from deteriorating, and each one of them has the condition on, on the left in, in the years. This is calls out twenty, twenty-five years in this, this case. You have forty percent drop in quality in the first seventy-five percent of service. The, the costs really don't, don't mean anything, but it's just, just the curve. You want to keep that, those roads from dropping down to the bottom. When they do, it costs more on base repairs, just not a milling and resurfacing project. We mill it, then we do what's called a proof roll on the roads, and it used to be, get away with three percent of base repair. I think last year, we were six percent, and we overran the contract. It'd be nice just to do milling and resurfacing without, without base repair, but we've extended the milling out, out so long that we do have substantial base, base repair. Plus, until we, it, it causes undue burden on our public works. I don't know how many times that you could patch, a, a patch. Go on to the next slide. It's, it's, these next, next three really tell, tell the same story, you see. Forty percent drop in quality, seventy percent of life, twenty, next one. One dollar, and that, that's not a dollar, that's just a ratio. One dollar cost between good and fair, if you let it go too far, will be five, five dollars. Next one. Really the same, same stories, really, really, really a drop really quickly after, after about ten, ten years. So here, here's the, what I'm proposing for, for 2026, and the way, the way I, well, the first thirteen roads on, on the list, McKee down, down through North Whitmore, as a result of the project agreement that we had between Columbia Gas, and that's, that's really low-hanging fruit that, that we go after to try to reduce, reduce our costs. If we have a utility company come in, whether it's the Water Authority, or the gas company, and it's a big project, we approach them and we say, hey, you want to do an agreement? And it saves them, it's a win-win for everybody. It's a win for, for them because we can do it cheaper than, than the milling and resurfacing. It's, it's, you know, good for them, it's good, good for us, that on C-rated roads, they pay for half the road, and we pay for the other half. So the first thirteen roads are going to cost about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Columbia Gas is paying for half. We have that money in the escrow fund. So yeah, any chance that we get to do a project agreement, it is a win-win, and we could do more, more roads, but we don't have those every year. We do have another one with Columbia next year. On Adam's Drive, we signed an agreement for it. We'll be getting three hundred and ninety thousand for, for that, so, but that's, for the most part, half the roads, and we, we do the other, the other half. Good, next one. So what happens when we overextend, when we don't properly fund a road improvement program? This is Taylor Drive. Fortunately, it's, it's on our 2025 program, but there isn't any community that should allow a road to deteriorate to this, this, this level. It's beyond its, its good service life, and it, you know, it'll cost more for, for base base, we're going to mill and resurface it, we'll proof roll it, and whatever base repair is needed, we'll, we'll, we'll do. I have four percent in, in the budget. Hopefully, it'll be there like that, but it may go to six, six to seven percent. But this type of payment, you may not call it dangerous, but it's less safe to drive on this than, than, than a newer pavement. And again, Public Works has been, been battling this, this road, and they'll continue, and right next to it is Clifton Drive. Where do you draw the line? We're, we're not paving Clifton Drive, but Clifton is almost as bad as, as Taylor, but we're, we're not doing that this year because we don't, don't have the budget. We've been drastically underfunding our road improvement program. Next one. Norbin Avenue. Are we doing this this year? No, but, but look at, look at the condition. This is one of our main thoroughfares. So this is in the grouping of wards one and two. We have, we've grouped the roads. It was about six or eight years ago that they saved money on mobilization, and that was low-hanging fruit that, that we picked, that really saved us a good, good bit of money. So this year, we're working in, in wards six and seven, will be in 2026, three, four, five. 2027, wards one and two. Norbin Avenue is in one and two, so two years. John has to, the battle of potholes, the freeze and thaw in, in, in winter, when there's more productive work than he can do, other than patching, patches on Norbin Avenue. Next one. Samantha Way. It's in the three, four, five grouping, so it could be a candidate for, for 2026, but it is not on the list because it's, it just didn't, didn't make the cut. So this, this road will take, we have to fight it for four years. Patching potholes, using resources of Public Works. And the way I come up with the proposed road improvements for 2026, we used to have Roadbotics, and Roadbotics was a software company that rated our roads through special cameras and imaging, using artificial intelligence that took constant photographs, converted to logarithms, then to shape files. Don't ask me, explain exactly how it's done, but basically, that, that's the in and out of it. They went out of business. So we were due for an upgrade of, of our, but we couldn't find anybody to do it. So I took the four-year-old data, and every road in wards three, four, and five, I drove and evaluated each, each road. Instead of a letter grade, I graded what would this road look like in four years unless we resurfaced it in, in 2026? So I did a low, a medium, and a, and a high, and eventually added another category, medium-high, because some that were, weren't quite high, but more, more than, than, than medium. Samantha Way is a medium, so it did not, not make the cut. So the projected or proposed road improvement program for 2026 included all the medium and the medium-high at a value of two point four six million, taking last year's unit prices and adding, adding five, five percent. So Samantha Way, four more, four more freeze and thaw cycles, four, four more winters, and four, four more years that Public Works has, has to fight that. And, and there's, these are just examples. I mean, I didn't necessarily pick the toughest one. These, these are examples. You, what's adjacent street to this Windsor? Yeah, it, it's, it's just bad. So, next one. Did we miss? Okay. We had, we had some photographs of Calderville Road. For some, for some reason, we, we didn't get them. Calderville Road is the worst road in, in a township. It's an embarrassment. We fortunately are paving it this, this year. I was pulled off the side of the road, I was doing, doing some measurements, and somebody come out, I was talking to him, and I told, and I was embarrassed to tell him that we're paving Calderville Road next year. I mean, and how, how many years have you been, been fighting Calderville? Okay, okay. There, there's a higher authority than, than me that, that knows the condition of, of the roads better than me. The Public Works employee that does the street sweeping, that covers all the roads at five mile per hour, John, help, help me with his opinion of the, of the state of the union of our road, road system.
Good evening. Not to be negative, but it's very, very poor. I think he reports in weekly with problems he's finding everywhere, which we, we battle constantly. And back to the, Bob's earlier point about Norbin Avenue, once the cold season starts, we pretty much have to travel Norbin Avenue. I make him check it every Friday afternoon because it's, it's bad. I mean, we get some really bad holes out there, and it's busy every day, but on the weekends, it's, it's really busy out there. So we, we try to pay constant attention to that. Calderville Road, we're out there at least once a week, once every ten days to patch in the winter. I think the bottom line is, each one of you in your wards knows, you could think of probably two to five roads right off the bat that, that need attention immediately. And, and to go on Bob's point a little bit further, Commissioner Zona and I had discussed the problems over there in the gutter lines. Most of the housing plans that have been put in over the years, they're still on their original pavement from the developers. We've never even paved them. We're battling stretch marks, and, you know, we, we do what we can to a point, but as I told- But as I told Bob this morning, and, uh, Harry, we can battle it to a point. We're not equipped to fix some of the things that, that need attention. Milling and resurfacing, we, we do minimal because we have to do everything by hand right now, as we've discussed in the past. Would like to make some changes to that, but, uh, it, it's a constant battle. That's, that's the bottom line.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh, thi- this is a picture of Frog Road. We, uh, had a slide developed, you know, about, about five years ago. And we, we watched it, and, uh, and ta- and finally, we determined that we reached a point of equilibrium. We didn't spend a lot of money of, of engineering. We ju- just monitored and said, it looks, looks like we're, we're at equilibrium there. So let's talk to John, and let's try to fix this. As far as John, I, I'm not sure if you know what a gem you, you have. He, I've been a municipal engineer for over forty-five years. I've worked with many, many Public Works Director. And I don't want to say anything bad about any, the rest of them, but John is, is the best. He's a breath of, of fresh air. I never heard him say, I can't do it. All, I would ever say, I can do it, ju- just give me the, the men and equipment, and I'll do it. And he, he did this. And we did it in-house with, with Public Works. We knew it was a water issue. We excavated, found, found the water. We, we gutted out the system, and we, and we stabilized it. And we put thi- this guy, guide rail in. It wa- it wasn't Public Works, it, it was, it was con- contracted work. And the photograph on, on the right, you see, we, we had to do a, a taper system from new to substandard guide rail. Most of the guide rail that we have in the township, we have a lot of it, is substandard. And Mr. Dice, I'm sure you agree, if, if we have substandard guide rail, it's, it's a liability issue for the tr- traveling public. PennDOT says guide rail should only be used in situations where a vehicle striking an object or leaving the roadway would result in a more severe consequences than if it were simply to strike the, the guide rail. So if it less hazard, I mean, you could damage your car and, and get, um, get hurt hitting, hitting a guide rail. But it's the lesser of two evils. You hit the guide rail or you strike an object when you leave the road, if you don't have a guide rail. So if it's lesser to hit the guide rail, then you should have got, there's, there's warrants for, for guide rail. So aga- again, the, the taper, we, we don't have a budget for guide rail. Our bu- budget is zero, and we have, we need to start a program repairing and replacing our, our, our guide rail. Borough Mon- Monroeville, they have a hundred and ten miles of road. Their budget, annual budget for guide rail is two hundred thousand dollars. We have a hundred and sixty miles of road. Our budget is zero. So a lot of times, there'll be an accident that's not reported, maybe, maybe a truck hits a guide rail. We don't have, but we have to steal money from another line item to, to fix that guide rail. We just can't leave it like, like that. We did do a project this year, we, about sixty thousand dollars. But we had to find, well, what line item can we steal from, from Public Works? Now, we, we need a, a separate line item for the repair and replacement of, 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 of guide rail. And back to Monroeville, you know, isn't, that's not to say that because Monroeville does something, we should do it. But we, they have a hundred and ten miles of road. Their annual budget for contractual work, milling and resurfacing, paving, crack sealing, sealing is two point five million. Again, a hundred and sixty miles for North Huntington, about one, one point three million. Monroeville, a hundred and ten miles, more than, 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 than double. Plum, they have ninety-nine miles of road. They, they spend about a million dollars e- every year. They have a fourteen-year service life, fourteen-year service life. Monroeville, sixteen-year service life. North Huntington, twenty-four service years serv- which is impossible. Next, next slide. This is Mah- Mahatty Hill, Hill Road. I, I did quantify the, the guide rail on, on Mahatty Hill Road. The, if you install new guide rail, it will be at thirty-one inches high. But it's, does, still meets code if it de- by paving, if it decreases to twenty-six and a half. On the way in, I, just for the heck of it, I, I stopped up on Mahatty Hill Road, put my flashers on, I checked several places. The height of the guide rail is between eighteen and twenty-two inches. I don't know if anybody ever stopped and looked down over the, to the, the bottom ravine on, on Mahatty Hill Road. That's a liability that, you know, we, we need to start, start a program, separate line item for, for, for guide rail, and, and follow through every year, and, and replace guide rail. John, if I say anything that you don't, let, let me know. Go ahead, ne- next one. Five, Five Pines. This is, the, the picture in the middle is, is an end treatment. I mean, that, that, that's very old, doesn't meet any type, type of standard. What is needed here to, to meet the standard, not only the, the, the height, I mean, it's, it's probably eighteen to, to twenty inches. But the, the end treatment, if you're seeing the, the rectangular boxes, their, their tension devices, they're colored yellow and, and black. That is what's needed at, at the end of this to meet code. There, it's about four thousand dollars, just, just for the, the end treatment. So. Is there any more sides? No, that, that's it. Questions for me?
I, I have a question. Um, maybe, Bob, you can help with this. If we go back to the slide that says, shows the ten-year road expenditures. Just looking at that, and I've done a little bit of quick math, it doesn't seem there's any real rhyme or reason as to how much it costs per mile, so to speak.
Well, it, it, it matters if it's, if it's more heavily seal coating, like, like this. You, you see the six point nine nine miles, and it, it's high because ma- ma- majority of, of the work, we're in wards, uh, seven. We have Mahatty Hill Road, we, Scot- Scotch Hill, Pine, Pine Hollow, Urban. Those are all fiber, fiber mat streets at, at a, at a significantly lower, lower cost. So I think it all, all depends if, if it's fiber mat milling, milling resurfacing, and so on.
If we just go down the line, it's, you're looking at about, you know, two thousand twenty-five, we spent a hundred and ninety-one thousand per mile. Twenty-four, we spent two hundred and two thousand per mile. Ninety, or twenty-three, we spent two hundred and nineteen thousand per mile. I mean, just doing some quick math on those, it just seems like there's a big fluctuation.
Oh, there is. And, and it has related to the, the, the seal coating, the synthetic si- seal coating. If it's just, just a fiber mat, it, it's six dollars and fifteen cents a, a square yard. Milling and resurfacing is, is eighteen dollars. So you could see how the numbers can, can fluctuate.
Okay, so in the budget for this year, is it, um, more of the resurfacing or more of the fiber?
Well, we have three, three major roads that we're, we're projecting for fiber mat, and that is McCannon, from Robin Station to, to Lucia Lane, Robin Station from Spiker Hill to Glenwood, and Five Pines, the, the entirety, from Colonial Matter to the, the Lincoln Way.
What are the board's thoughts about implementing a stormwater fee and the tax millage increase of one mil? Doing that all at once for the twenty twenty-six budget, and that should give us many year, you know, at least five, ten years for, for financial stability, and we can gauge it down the road. But moving forward, that's, that's, we're at the crossroads now, of, of what do we do moving forward? There's been suggestions in the past of, you know, small villages throughout the years, uh, that, that's great. But at the same time, that, that doesn't give us what we need to do. And, you know, elections can, you know, new commissioners can come in and stop that. So we've started doing a program, and that program's gonna go away, uh, because it's not funded anymore. This'll just be a one-time thing, like back in twenty, you know, two thousand and six, when the millage was raised two mills. We're just asking for one mil, and the stormwater fee implementation, which, you know, will kick off rounds of, of discussions in the next few months. And getting rid of the per capita tax, which is, uh, you know, it's a nuisance tax. Commissioner Gray wanted to get rid of that when I first started here, and, and just like anything, you don't want to give, you know, cut anything. But, uh, I've been always looking for ways every budget cycle of, of how to cut that per capita tax.
What projects, you were talking under the major project list. What projects would qualify under the stormwater fee?
The, the Haywood Road culvert replacement.
Okay.
The stormwater detention ponds and streambank stabilization. Uh, the Roth Drive culvert replacement project, and the McKee Road channel restorations. And I did pull a sample budget from, uh, Plum Borough. Their, their stormwater, and, and they use their, their stormwater fee project, uh, the money for materials. They use it for materials, uh, maintenance of repo- repairs and streets. So if we do any of these catch basins or stormwater pipes in the road, we'll go back and repave that portion. That portion will be paved out of, uh, utilizing the stormwater fee. They also pay for engineering services. A- again, you know, we're budgeted only fifty thousand dollars of engineering services out of general fund. This year, we're, we're budgeted about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering services. Included contracted services, and also salaries, too. Uh, they pay a portion of their public work salaries out of that fund. So if, if, you know, if we have a, a group that goes out and, and does work on our stormwater management, replacing any catch basins, the pipes, things of that nature, anything stormwater related, or go out and maintain our stormwater retention ponds of cleaning them up. We can take their hours that they've, they've worked on there and charge the stormwater, uh, the fee. But, but realistically, first, I would focus all the projects out of that because we're just so behind on our projects. And after a couple of years, if it settles down, if we have carryover money, you know, that carryover money, um, is going to increase that fund. But then we can start paying some of those salaries out of the, instead of the general fund. It would hit the stormwater fund. That way, we have more money in our general fund. So as far as like the guide rail, because we've shifted some of that money out of the general fund into the stormwater fee fund, now we can put together a guide rail program.
Would these projects qualify for MS four credit?
Yes. Yes, these are part of the projects that I believe, uh, Mr. Robinson put together a couple of years ago of about ten million dollars worth of projects in the next ten years or eight years. Uh, when the permit expires, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just summarizing what I recall.
Hi, yes. I, I just, just wanted to further comment on, on your list. I'm gonna start with the Haywood Road culvert. We are ready to go. We have done the engineering. We have a, a permit. If we don't start the project this year, our, our permit expires. We would like to receive bids in December and get ready to go in, in, in January. There's a long lead time on the cul- culvert materials. The stormwater detention pond, and that should be a non-discretionary item. We have an NPDS permit, and I think it goes till twenty twenty-nine, and it stipulates, it's a federal permit, of what the township needs to do each year, what we need to accomplish. So you can't say, well, we're not gonna fund that this year. I mean, it's, it's bound as non-discretionary as you, you can get, so photo, photo permit. The Roth Drive culvert, I don't anticipate construction next year. We have to do an engineering. It's, it's, uh, uh, it's a, a joint permit, Army Corps, DEP. We have, there's a lot of environmental stuff we, we, we need to do. We're, we're not gonna be able to do the construction, uh, next, next year. But ac- actually do, do the engineering. The same with the McKee Road, uh, or, or the Roth, Roth Drive culvert. That, that will be a, a mo- most likely, may, maybe a, 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 two, two general permits. But the, uh, the engineering, just on Roth Drive, is, is over fifty thousand dollars. So I think it's gonna take some time to do the en- engineering. We won't be in a position to do the actual construction next year, but we, we need to do the, the engineering.
And if I might add some, some, some creative thought process with this is, is, you know, you, you take, I want to use Coles as an example. Coles is a large parking lot, that, how often do you go up there and it's fully filled with cars? You know, people park, you know, um, there, they might have a large fee. I don't, I don't know what their fee would be, but it would be larger than, than some others. Our comprehensive plan made a high recommendation to, to do our, redo our zoning ordinance that was last done in the early nineteen nineties. Some of the things that other municipalities are doing nationwide is, is re- when they redo their zoning, is they're reducing the number of vehicles that are required for that space, um, to make it more realistic. So for Coles, for example, if, if this, if the, the planning commission would, would redo the zoning ordinance and, and do this, Coles would benefit by not having that large parking lot, pay less in a stormwater fee, and sell that other half of that parking lot for future economic development. Does that make sense? Because that's what these municipalities are doing that I found, that I've read, that they're, you know, they, they've zoned too much parking. It's not being utilized. It's just blacktop, um, which is not good. And, and they find that they can, uh, get rid of that. It's, it's, we have a stormwater fee. Coles would pay less of a stormwater fee, and that parking lot can develop into, you know, a, a, another store can come in there. Maybe a Chick-fil-A or Cracker Barrel, if you're listening. So, but that's just some ideas of, of, of down the road. Thank you.
I know last year, we talked about, when we talked first about the stormwater fee, or remember it was a tax or a fee, and the tax was not... This is a fee, and you, you said in here, eighty-seven other municipalities are collecting this stormwater fee. So that's all, if somebody would challenge that, that's not gonna...
Well, it, it has been challenged by, by West, Westchester County, or, um, and that, we, we thought it was gonna go to the State Supreme Court be- be- before this, but I will tell you, I, none of the communities that I've talked to that have been enacted the fee have blinked. They're still collecting, uh, their, their stormwater fee. I lived in Hampton Township in Allegheny County, and I, every, in the, end of January, I paid my a hundred and fifteen dollars a, a year for my stormwater fee. Been paying for five, five or six years, and there's many, many other communities, as, as Harry has, has mentioned, so.
Yeah, I was quite surprised that, yeah, that there's a lot of municipalities that are still enacting it. I talked to one that enacted, and what they, I expressed my concern, is what if, you know, the nonprofits say that they're tax exempt? And what they're doing is they're still collecting that fee because they're still paying it. They're still paying that. But what they do is put it in escrow, just in case if, if there's an appeal with the Supreme Court or a future appeal, that money is there and they can refund it. Because that's my concern, is if we enact this fee, and the Supreme Court rules with that university and say it's a tax and not a fee, you've already spent this money. You know, how, you know, you're, you're, it's, it's not good.
That's why I was asking that question, yeah.
They, they, we spoke, I spoke to the manager there, and they're, they put it in an escrow fund, uh, just in case. And one of the good parts is, it collects interest. So you can move that interest to help fund the general fund. So. So, but, yeah, that's, that's, because that's been my concern, that's why I haven't brought it to the board the past couple of years. But, but we're here at this point now, and I, I feel comfortable doing it, just because of the, the other municipalities throughout the state have done it. Like Bob said, without blinking an eye, and, and, and one of them is, is putting that money into an escrow fund, just in case.
Do we know, is anyone, is any other municipalities in Westmoreland County using that? Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe one is discussing it at the moment, which is a neighboring municipality. I'm not sure if I want to say their name or not because it's still in discussions. So, do, do you guys know of any in Westmoreland?
I, I do not, I believe eighty-four.
I do want to make a point off of that. As we expand a paving program, on all the streets that we pave, we repair all the infrastructure prior to paving. The newer streets have plastic pipe, so we just usually have to do catch basin repairs. But on all the older streets, they're all tin whistle metal pipe, and we take all of it out prior to paving because it's going to fail. So that, that's been the primary, primary work for us the last two months preparing for the road program. Any metal pipes been removed. In the tailor drive slot, that's what the patchwork was. But that would benefit us with that because it, it, there's a lot of metal pipe that we're going to be replacing over the years, and a lot of catch basins. Concrete's not what it used to be.
And that could be all paid out of the stormwater fund?
I mean, I, I would say, my opinion would be, if we have to do something, I would be more apt to support the second option, being knitted. It benefits the citizens more than the first option, and it benefits the township, too, so, just my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with you, Commissioner Zona. And there again, you know, as we all sit up here faced with this, by the way, Manager Falk, great presentation, actually very present, as far as the presentation, very impressed. There again, we have to make a decision, whether it's going to be option one or option two. It's, it's a decision that's very hard to make, as I sit here representing my ward. But there again, it's time that we have to make this decision, and it's a tough decision to make, but I'm going to say that I would definitely be in favor of option two myself, to benefit the residents and also the township.
And I might add, it, it's not going to deter us from not applying for grants. The grant money's still out there. Again, not all, all projects are funded a hundred percent by grants. You have to have the matching funds, which we do in the, in the capital reserves, but again, once we spend that money, it's spent. I mean, we, we can't even afford to, to put money away to, to save it unless we have some major real estate tax transfer, real estate transfers, or, or some windfalls, which, which I, I don't see happening. So we still have a lot of room for development in North Huntington Township, which is a good sign, but we just, we're not keeping up with the demands as for, as far as the flooding. You know, the, the storm over the summer, which damaged Roth Drive, the Jacktown Playground, and, and Pine Hollow, that cost us about a hundred thousand dollars. If not more or less.
About two hundred.
About two hundred thousand, if I stand corrected. Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Yeah, about two hundred thousand dollars worth of damage.
Harry, that was just in those two places. We dealt with issues all over from, I mean, that was, that was a bad one.
Is, is there any idea when it says the businesses would be, with impervious surfaces would be built accordingly, of, you know, how that, you know, how much of a bill that they're going to be picking up?
Sure. Mr. Robinson, are you able to explain?
Yeah, there's, it's called an ERU, equivalent residential unit. I, I believe it's thirty-five hundred square feet, an equivalent residential unit of impervious area. So, so a business that has thirty-five thousand square feet would pay ten ERUs.
But what does that mean in, in price?
Well, if, so if, if an ERU for, for residence, it was, say, a hundred dollars, then the, thirty-five thousand square foot business would, would pay a thousand dollars.
And as we, as we work on this ordinance and craft it, there, there's plenty of samples out there, so we don't have to start from scratch, but, but there would, we would want to put in tax credits because we would want to ensure that that business owner, well, they, they're already following the stormwater management plan when they come in and design, but maybe take the extra steps to keep that water, you know?
Well, I know there's a lot of new businesses that have put in like underground water retention systems and spent tons of money already on that. Now, you know, they're going to get hit with another stormwater, you know, a fee or a tax on top of, you know, all the money that they've already invested into that.
Right, and we would, I would like to put something in the ordinance to say, and once you get the bill, or once, you know, we do our calculations and submit the bill, that they, there will be an application that they can apply for credit. And then we would go out there, we would review the plans that, that we have, or the building permit plans, and go out there and inspect those facilities and, and make sure that, that everything is, is kosher, then they would get that tax credit. And we can either, they can either, you know, depending on, want to do the ordinance, I, I haven't seen any of the ordinances yet, but you can craft it to where if they file an appeal, they don't have to pay anything, or if they apply for a tax credit, they won't have to pay anything until after we've gone through the process of, of establishing that tax credit. So if they have, for example, a ten thousand, I'm just using numbers, a ten thousand dollar bill they get, and then they fill out the, the tax credit application, and we go out there and do the inspection, and everything is good, and they might only be charged five thousand dollars. So then we can go back and issue a new invoice reflecting that tax credit before they make that payment, to help our local businesses as much as possible.
Okay. When you have a detention facility, a commercial, it controls the, the rate, but anytime you have a development, there's additional volume. So you, the, the old, yeah, the one, the two, the five, ten, the twenty-five, a hundred, you, you have to show that the, the rate of discharge. But ultimately, the volume of water, no matter what you do, increases downstream. So there, there is some, some burden on, on the, you know, systems down, downstream from new development, although they are controlled by a detention facility. So there, it probably won't be a hundred percent credit, there, there will be some credit because you have a detention, but we'll, we'll work out an equitable formula that will, will be fair enough to all.
What is a dimension on something like Kohl's parking lot or Walmart? Do you guys know, square foot, square feet?
The Walmart building, I believe, was around ninety thousand square feet, so...
The building?
The building itself. So the parking lot's probably three, four times that.
Yeah.
So that can kind of gauge it for you a little bit.
Then the, the seven dollar for the residential, that's just as a zoned residential house? Or, you know, is it, like, is there a minimum or maximum requirement? You say, hey, my neighbor has, you know, half their yard's all concrete, that's all impervious surface, and, you know, I have a gravel driveway?
A ERU will be the same for, no matter what, what size house and what size driveway there, there is. We'll have an average ERU, which is, you know, say thirty-five hundred square, square And what, what I did to determine that, we, we took a number of different developments, and bigger developments, smaller developments, and looked at the driveways and footprints of the houses and, and came up with an average. We, we don't want to have multiple ERUs. It'll, it'll be an average.
Any other board discussion or questions on the proposed budgets?
I just have one other thing that, under the parks, we have line item zero-one-four-five-one-two-four-seven, which is the programming. I would not be opposed to giving the parks more money for programming, even if it's, you know, minimal at this point, and I think their current budget's a hundred thousand. We can increase that a little bit. I think that would help bring some better, more variety things to our community.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. We, if you recall, the board, we did, I think, a year or two ago, we did increase it from seventy-five thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. At the same time, we also implemented a, a sponsorship program back into the mix of things to generate revenue. But, yeah, with, with, with Mrs. Kinkade doing everything that she's doing, we've increased our recreation program, you know, it was tenfold. I mean, we, we brought it back to what it was, I think twenty fifteen airs, about ten years ago. But again, that's, that's a number I want to gauge as far as what we finished out the year with, what our plans are for next year. But if there is, if there is money left over, I can, I can put some towards that. But, but, yeah, we're, we're doing a lot more recreation. And in fact, you know, not to get too much into the weeds of the budget as far as tonight, but, you know, we, we have not had much luck getting summer help throughout the, the past years, and this year was the worst. And summer help cuts the grass. They, they maintain, they help our, our parks guys with the parks and cut grass and things of that. Next year, we're looking to, we only get about one or two. Before, we used to get a handful, and I'm sure even before that, it was out the door, people wanting to come and, and work for summer jobs. We're, we're looking at not only hiring one or two summer help to cut grass, but possibly one or two to help as counselors for our recreation program during the summer to, to help Lydia. But it'd just be a temporary job, but instead of cutting grass, they'll be helping with our rec programs. We do have an excellent recreation board. They're there to volunteer as well, but again, they're, sometimes they're busy on the weekend or nights with their, with their lives. It's a, it's a volunteer thing, so that, that's another look at, at the budget, you know, getting down deeper. We'll discuss that more, you know, next month, but, but tonight, I just wanted to gauge how to move forward to fund the budgets, that way we can work on a, a more detailed budget next month. Next month, we'll get more into the weeds of things. But if the board is, is, the consensus of the board is to, to, you know, highly consider raising the millage one mill and implementing a stormwater fee, I can get to work in crafting a, a better general fund budget, taking those items out as far as, that would be, that would go towards a stormwater fund, and possibly do more with the, the paving and, and the guide rail and, and recreation. And I might add that, that, you know, again, we'll talk more about next week, but, but the public works labors, we have about six to eight that are going to retire at the end of next year. I have six in there budgeted, six additional, but just for half of a year, you know, starting, starting in July first. So we want to look towards around June of next year to advertise, and we'll have a better idea of who exactly, how many is going to retire, and, and we'll get those new hires in towards the, the middle to end of summer. But that's budgeted, that's accounted for as well in, in the budget.
Any other board questions or comments? I just had one or two, I guess, maybe for clarification, you might have said this already, Manager Falk. So you project if we would go with either option one or two, and it sounds like the board might be interested in option two more, you're not going to be coming back to us next year, a year from now, saying, well, that one mill wasn't enough, we actually need to do another mill? You'd be comfortable projecting in the future? This one mill increase will, not that you can guarantee it, can't foresee the future, but will last us hopefully a few years?
That is my plan every year. When I started, I believe the, the budget before I came on, Mr. Silka, the previous manager, said that, that, you know, changes, we need more revenue, we need to raise taxes. I came in here, evaluated the budget, and spent a couple, you know, a couple of years working on it to get us down to where we need, thanks to the, the good work of the staff. We had some staff changeovers, too, which helped, but, but we're, we're frugal with the taxpayers' money. But we're, we're at the point where, you know, we're going to get these complaints, you guys are going to get the complaints, we get them, too, and, and our, the response is, unfortunately, you know, we just don't have the funds to do it. And we don't want to do that to our residents. They don't deserve that. They, they live here in North Huntington. It's, it's the best place in Westmoreland County. So, but, yeah, that's, that's the plan. I, I've, I've kicked the can down the road as much as I can, utilizing our, our ARPA funds, you know, put them, put them away, capitalized on the interest rate to get that, that big surplus the past few years, and it came to fruition with this year, we, we did, you know, almost one point five to one point seven million dollars in projects. And as you recall, I said last year, this is, that this budget is not sustainable, and here we are.
Great. And then the other question I had is, so if we wanted, if we would go with one of these options and not take any out of our savings or, savings account will be about twenty-nine percent of our operating budget for, projected budget for next year? I think you said if we would take around five hundred thousand, that would be around twenty-four or so?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, yeah, our, our goal, to be fiduciary responsible, whatever revenue we, whatever expenditures we have should match, match the revenues, and we shouldn't utilize any of the surplus money for the carryover, or we shouldn't have to use any of the, the rainy day balance. This is here because there's a major catastrophe. You know, knock on wood, we haven't had any, but, but say, you know, we had a storm roll through, we have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs, well, that, that money's going to have to come somewhere, it's going to come from here.
I think Commissioner Gray was probably on the board with me at the time we did that fund balance policy. And the main reason I wanted to bring that up because we got bills that the township pays beginning of the year before we actually get a lot of tax revenue money, so you have to have some type of operating savings account to actually pay the bills at the beginning of the year before we actually get tax revenue in. So that's why having that, in my opinion, having that at least twenty-five percent in unforeseen circumstances with, that we have to spend money to have that available to us.
And that's what we do. We do pull money out of the savings account to fund the, to fund the general fund balance in the first few months of the year to get us through. That's, that's very common. You know, municipalities would take out tax anticipation notes for that, and, but you're paying the, the finance fee, which is a couple thousand dollars. So with us having that money in there and have the ability to do that, that money goes back in, and we save the couple thousand dollars in finance charges by not having to go out and get a, a tax anticipation note. So that is, that is great to have, that does save some money.
And I, I would totally be in favor, no, Commissioner Gray's brought that up, the per capita of tax, I think, especially if we are going to increase a mill to get rid of that nuisance tax, I think it's just silly to pay that tax every year on top of another tax, even though we might be creating a stormwater fee, which is be a new fee. That, that's all I had. Thank you, Manager Falk.
When I got on the board years ago, many years ago now, we did take out tax anticipation loans. We did away with that by building the fund, and, and I'm glad we don't do that anymore. I still have some issues with basically the board attitude towards money, other people's I'll get to that in a second, but Bob, can you go over the E R D, EDUs, EDRs, or whatever it said?
Equivalent, ERU, equivalent residential unit.
Okay. So you would use the example that if, if some commercial building, they would pay ten times what a house would pay?
Based on their impervious area.
Based on, okay.
The, the roof, rooftop and, and parking lot. But, but be, would be subject to everybody else, but for, for credits for existing storm... The rooftop and parking lot, but would be subject to everybody else but for credits for existing stormwater detention.
So basically, if the resident is going to pay seven dollars a month, the business is going to pay 70 a month? Per E R U?
Yes. If it, 35,000 compared to 3,500, yes.
Okay. And then how would that affect like a solar farm?
I'm sorry, the solar farm?
Solar farm, yeah, with solar panels and which are impervious, but underneath is not?
Yeah, I don't think we would consider a solar panel impervious. It's above the ground, the rain would hit it and would not be impervious underneath it. But there will be a stormwater permit for the solar farm, I'm assuming.
Will there?
Well.
How would that work?
Do you know?
Yeah, so I don't know for sure that there is a stormwater management plan with that, but I would assume with the amount of impervious with just the roads going through there, there probably would be. I don't know, Josh, have you seen any of that yet?
Permit with a solar farm. There's going to be, I should say. We didn't get that for yet.
Okay, there's going to be?
Yeah, there's going to have to be some kind of stormwater control for that site, yeah.
Because nothing will grow under the solar panels, so we talked about that, or it was talked about at the Planning Commission, right?
Right.
That's going to be a lot of runoff.
But it'll be to the newer standards, which requires some infiltration, so it could be 100% credit. Those are details we need to work out.
Okay. Details to be worked out. The other thing I have a concern with before dipping into the public purse again, or deeper, is I voted against a number of things this year, or the past couple of years, among them being cameras, weather camera, although we didn't get a vote on that one. Things that were unnecessary expenses like charity donations, trash cans, would we pay for the trash cans for the park? Fifty grand?
Right, it did come under budget in the 40s.
And then, what, two months ago, you presented a report that said we could advertise for six public works guys because we had extra revenue. You can only spend that once, so I just feel like the board is being free with money. And another thing is the unanticipated mid-year raise of staff, or $10,000. Trash cans, weather. I just don't think the board respects other people's money and is spending it quite properly. I have great reservations about increasing the millage and adding a tax. Whether it's called a fee or a tax has yet to be determined, right, by the court?
Well, right now, it's a fee, and that's what the objection is of Westchester, that it's really a tax, but
Right.
again, the communities that have a stormwater fee have not blinked because of Westchester.
Well, okay, I mean, that's all considerations for me.
Commissioner Gray, the $10,000 pay increase, there was no employee that got a $10,000 mid-year pay increase this year.
Not this year, last year. I said in the past couple of years.
Okay.
And it was in April, so that's mid-year.
Right, and that was me, but that was last year, and the board had a
I said the past couple of years. Things I voted no on.
I mean, I understand your concern, Rich. I mean, not that I agree with some of the stuff you brought up. I think the trash cans that Lydia did and the Parks Department did, you go to the parks, I think they look a lot nicer than having a 55-gallon trash drums. And I think what Manager Fulk says, I don't want to speak for him, I think we're trying to hold ourselves to a nicer standard. And that's maybe just one little example of anyone that does use the parks. You see a nice trash can, not saying a trash can looks ever nice, but it's a trash can. But it looks a lot nicer to have a nice trash can versus a 55-gallon metal drum just sitting there. So maybe that's a bad example, but it's just a little example. I think we're trying to hold ourselves to a higher standard. I mean, you and I have been on board a long time. I've never been about raising taxes. Actually, I think I've only ever lowered taxes, so if we would do this, it'd be the first time I ever would vote to raise a tax, which I have reservations about, like you just voiced yourself, let alone to create a new fee. I think the fee thing is more of us having an unmandated MS4 thing, unmandated, with it out being funded by the state. That's something that we unfortunately have to do, so whether we don't do a stormwater fee and we raise taxes to pay for it, sooner or later, we're going to have to answer that through the state and the federal government if we don't do that. So that's what we have to do, whether, how we want to tax the residents or charge residents the fee, that's stuff that we're going to have to do, unfortunately. Now, some of the other stuff you mentioned, yeah, that all does add up, cameras and whatnot, but I don't think to that extent that we're raising taxes for any of that. It wouldn't be a tax raise of a mill for to pay for anything of that nature, I don't believe.
I forgot the NHT signs coming in to the township, too. I voted no against that, so.
I would, just to add on to that, what Zach was saying, the signs and the garbage cans, I agree. I mean, we've said it before, we're a first-class township, we should be first-class, and I think a sign driving into the township is a small, instead of, we have these metal ones that are faded, and, I mean, I think it's a small gesture that goes a long way. And I think the cameras, we have a duty as government officials to protect our citizens, and you can't go anywhere without cameras, and to not have them is a disservice to our citizens, I think. Look at some high-profile murders that have just been in the news. You know what? They catch these people because of cameras. That one that just happened yesterday, they have the suspect on camera. And God forbid something happens in one of our parks and we don't have a camera there, and the suspect gets away with it. I think that the little bit of money that we spend on that is for the safety of our citizens. I don't think you can discount that. That's it.
Any other board discussion tonight? All right, I believe you might have some direction here, I guess, some of the board may be open up to option two. Maybe you can start, at least with some rough stuff with that. I definitely think the board, it sounds like, for the most part, may be open to the idea of a stormwater fee of some sort, at least to get a draft started that we can take a look at, see what we're moving forward with.
Right, I could work on those drafts. I can present a budget next month with an option that reflects what it would look like with nothing. I'll present an option that would look like with that one mill tax increase and a stormwater fee.
I guess, if you could, and that probably would be covered, but I'd be interested to see what it would be with just a stormwater fee and no millage, right? I mean, that's probably would be covered in one of those options, but I just wouldn't mind seeing just a stormwater fee and no tax millage increase, what that would look like.
Well, we won't be able to pave all the roads that Bob wants every year. I have to keep turning him down.
Thank you, Manager Fulk. And planning engineering topics?
Yeah, a couple items this month from the Planning Commission. Let me take over the monitor. Okay, item number one, S-162025, the Claycombe Lot Line Revision. This is a proposed boundary line revision located off of Wallace Drive. Terry and Judy Claycombe of 210 Wallace Drive are the applicants and owners of both properties. The applicant will be removing parcel A, which is shaded in dark blue, from 210 Wallace Drive and adding it to their adjacent property, 250 Wallace Drive. After the boundary line revision, 210 Wallace Drive, 11.365 acres, and 250 Wallace Drive, 11.723 acres. Both lots would meet the minimum dimensional requirements in an R2 zoning district, and no structures within the newly created properties will need special zoning approval. December 8th meeting, the Planning Commission recommended this plan for approval with no conditions by a vote of seven to zero. Are there any questions on this one? Moving on, S-182025, Karinko Subdivision. This is the proposed subdivision located at the intersection of Guffey Road and Wilshire Drive. Edward Karinko of 2505 Guffey Road is the applicant and owner of the existing 4.97-acre parcel. He's looking to subdivide his existing parcel into three lots, two of which could be used for future single-family homes. Existing house would remain on Lot 1, shaded in blue. All proposed lots would meet the minimum dimensional requirements in an R3 zoning district. At the September 8th meeting, the Planning Commission voted to approve this plan by a vote of seven to zero with condition of sewage planning approval from the P A D E P. You might recognize this one. We had this one a couple months ago. It was denied. They ended up cleaning up Lot 3 and just turning it into one lot instead of two. Was there any questions on this? Moving on to number three, S-192025, the Messenger Boundary Line Revision. This is the proposed Boundary Line Revision located off of Robin Station Road. William and Vivian Messenger of 1023 Messenger Lane are the applicants and owners of both properties. Purpose of subdivision is to move one of the houses that are currently located on the same lot onto their own separate lots. Boundary Line Revision would leave Lot 1 with 0.99 acres and Lot 2 with 0.92 acres. Both lots would meet the area requirements for an R4 zoning district. Waiver was requested for the length of the flag access strip being over 400 feet. The Boundary Line Revision eliminates having two houses on one parcel with still being able to meet the setback requirements for both houses. At the September 8th meeting, the Planning Commission recommended this plan for approval with no conditions by a vote of seven to zero. Was there any questions with this?
A question real quick.
Yeah.
400-foot limit for the flag, how long is that?
I believe it's 430-something. Let me, hmm. I don't think my eyes are that good.
That was my problem, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's actually 457.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? And item number four, S-P132025, the Cleveland Price Expansion. This is a major land development located off of State Route 993. Cleveland Price, Inc. is the applicant and owner of the 20.9-acre parcel. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing use for office space, processing, and warehouse space. Additional parking will also be added to the site. Expansion of the current use is permitted in the industrial district. The applicant is requesting the following two waiver modification requests from the Soudo. 511.4 pedestrian crosswalks and refuge islands shall be provided at intervals not exceeding 200 feet along the length of each parking lot. For that, the applicant is stating that the orientation of the parking lot was designed so that all drive aisles have access to sidewalks leading to the main entrance, eliminating the need for sidewalks and rescue aisles. Request number two, 511.7, no driveway entering a public street at the curb shall exceed the width of 25 feet. The applicant is proposing a driveway width of 30 feet for safe returning radius for tractor-trailers. At the September 8th meeting, the Planning Commission had no objections to either waiver modification request and recommended this plan for approval by a vote of seven to zero with the following conditions. Number one, stormwater management erosion control plans and NPDS permit must be approved and/or amended by the Westmoreland Conservation District. Number two, stormwater O and M agreement with the township must be signed and recorded. Number three, applicant must receive approval from NHTMA for the sanitary sewer design. Number four, applicant shall enter into commercial developers agreement with the township. And number five, outstanding engineering comments from KU's review letter dated August 19th, 2025. Up on the screen is the master plan. The two shaded yellow objects are the two proposed buildings. They are going to be done in two different phases, I believe. The one on the right would be the first, in the first phase. And the one on the left is, one on the right's more office, or warehouse space, the other one on the right, or left, is going to be more office space. Was there any questions about this plan? If there's no questions, that is all I have for tonight.
Hey, Josh, I have a question, not on one of these, but it was something that occurred at the Planning Commission last week.
Yes.
There was a modification request for the solar farm that was tabled.
Yes.
And there was a lot of talk with the Planning Commission about maybe being more helpful if there was an ordinance on these solar farms, which I think is a good idea, because I know we have one coming here to our township, but if you look around in the county, it's surrounding municipalities, they're starting to come in and starting to put them other places, too.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good idea to have something, I was, my question to you was going to be, do you think that would be helpful to you and your job and to the Planning Commission to have some, an ordinance setting regulations?
Yeah, I don't think that's going to hurt. You know, I think it's newer, so I think there's going to be more to come. It might be, it might be better to jump ahead of it and maybe get something in line before, you know, we get too many of these. Yeah, I don't think it would be a bad idea.
I agree with that.
I can definitely look into that.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's what I, I would throw that out to the board. I think that, just like Josh said, to jump ahead of it, because they're going to start coming, they're in other communities. And I, if you'd been following the news, some other communities have come up with ordinances on them, too, to get ahead of it, too. I think it's a good idea.
Right, we can, we'll prepare a draft next month, work session for the board to start the process of reviewing. But if we were to draft one, if we were to draft one, and it would be implemented by the end of the year or the first of the year, the one that's going on now would not
Correct.
be privy to what, they don't have to follow that work, because they've already started the process.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further board comments?
I do have one thing. I don't remember if it was the last work session, or it was a little while ago. It was brought up that we are financing vehicles. I would like some information on what vehicles are being financed, how much is being financed, and what the interest rates are that we're paying on those.
We'll get you, we'll get the commissioners a tally sheet.
Thank you.
There's only three, the street sweeper and the two dump trucks thus far. Is that correct?
And I believe you're going to get back to us with that other mower that you were talking about trying to finance as well, right?
Yes, Mr. Boswell reached out to a couple banks, three banks, and got it, so you'll have that on the agenda for next week.
All right, thank you. Any other further board comments?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Discussion. All those in the fairway by standing in line?
All right.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero, meaning adjourned at 8:39. Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero, meaning adjourned at 8:39.